Approval of last time's minutes.
Move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Moving on to second reading of ordinance. Second reading of an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as a portion of Northwest twenty-one Road Holden Street.
Mayor and City Council at your meeting, two weeks ago you held a public hearing for this request. This request from Johnson County Commissioner to annex in the last portion of Holden Street Northwest twenty-one road between this, the fifty highway bridge and the new roundabout. So this piece lies just north of the Ridgeway area. With this annexation, then all of that Holden Street would be, right away will be annexed into the city. We've received no additional public comments since your hearing. The staff would recommend approval of the ordinance at this time.
I move to approve. That's the most of the scratch, I think.
This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Moving on to first and second reading ordinances. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and Respec Construction Incorporated, under the terms and conditions of the Contractor Services Agreement dated June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the downtown electrical upgrade Phase One project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, we constructed Phase One in two thousand and two. The desire to have electric place down there for events. The methodology of installation at that time deteriorated over a few years to the point that staff and others felt that it wasn't safe to use. With that, we sought bids to repair and replace some of those components down there. In two thousand seventeen, that cost came in between seventy and seventy-five thousand dollars. Coming to, up to this date, we got estimate, or bid from the Respec to the Gordian Group, which would hire Empire Electric to do electrical work. The cost of the project has grown to a hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents, which is thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents over budget. Staff asking that, or staff requested information from Respec as far as what their timeline would be on the project, if they can do this work and have it completed before Burf Fest. We were assured that they would have a final date of September twenty-second. The issue is, staff of the running City Council is, do they, Council West staff to move forward with the project and seek additional funding to have this work done.
So is this, is this just basically so that we can have concerts on the backside of the courthouse? Is that where this electric's going to?
This electrical that is, that is failed is from the railroad tracks up to Colton Street. That was Phase One project we did downtown. It doesn't affect any of the other areas around there at this time.
So it provides electricity down Holden Street for vendors and those kinds of things as you go from the railroad tracks.
Going north.
Going towards Colton.
So if it wasn't passed by the City Council, would we have Burf Fest? Or we would be able to still have it?
No, you said I had Burf Fest. Everything's fine. This is just, this was an area that we held up having any vendors or anything for, for Burf Fest or any other program that's taking place downtown because of the fact that electrical substandard that's there. Some of them put in hardware, some of the electrical boxes that are in ground draw moisture. It's just not safe. You wouldn't plug into them if they was in your own house, so. But this was an opportunity, and we saw, saw the need there to go ahead and then prove that section for future use. The work that would be done was put in the festival type mounting that we have on Pine Street that is safe and secure, doesn't draw water, doesn't get, get wet again.
So we didn't have to bid it out? We didn't have to do a PDF or whatever?
We did this through the Gordian, which is, it's an accumulation of best prices. Kind of like it's same, very similar to the way we did the Lake Ridge, Colton, a few years ago. Same process.
So it's not, it's not affecting any of our businesses down there or anything like that? This is just?
No, it's not.
This is just strictly affecting that area for festival purposes?
That's correct.
Okay.
As amenities, this is a project that the council has seen as primarily, we have budgeted money. So we budgeted the first year, which was probably two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, due to the number of projects staff had going on, we weren't able to get to it. So we restricted that money for eighteen, nineteen. And weren't able to, to get to it. Well, we're in the process now of, the, the price has grown since we restricted that money.
And it's not gonna get any cheaper?
So now we have a choice of, do we go ahead and do it? And staff can find the additional thirty-eight thousand or get ready to bring a list of budget amendments to you anyway.
Right.
At the next council meeting. About, we're at a, we're at a, a point that if this is gonna be done and available in time for Burf Fest, it needs to be approved because we're gonna be cutting under the wire to get it, to get it done before Burf Fest. Or we can choose to table it and shelf it, and then when we have money in the budget to be able to add it back in, we can see if we're able to.
So because we don't have this, are we turning vendors down?
Not that I'd know of.
Okay.
I'd be interested to know, Matthew, who's not gonna get, if we're gonna try to find thirty-eight thousand in the budget to, who's not gonna get that?
Yeah.
And that's very concerning to me.
Yeah, that's my other question. Where's thirty-eight thousand dollars coming from?
Currently, we've identified around four hundred thousand to cut from this year's budget. So, and that, and within that money, we found the money to, to do this as well, so. Not quite sure how it affect next year's budget, but as for this year, we'll be able to do it without.
So we're cutting four hundred thousand out of the budget?
For, for nineteen.
For nineteen.
Yeah. That, and it's basically money that probably will not be spent anyway. So we're, we were able to, to cut some of that money out.
So?
Make it better for next one.
So we're spending thirty-eight thousand out of this budget or our next year's budget for this project?
It'll be out of this budget.
So of the hundred and eight thousand, seventy thousand is already budgeted and restricted. The thirty-eight thousand would be paid for out of spending that we're not, that has been approved to be budgeted to be spent, but we're not spending this year?
Yes.
And we can amend that and reassign that to this project of the council chief.
I'm afraid that kicking it down the road is gonna add even more costs and not be able to utilize the safety features and the benefits of our community, so I mean, I, I would. I know we don't wanna bite the bullet now, but I would advocate for getting it done now just because it's gonna continue to go up dramatically, I'm afraid, over the next few years.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, um, 'cause I wa, I wasn't here when this was initially decided. So is the rationale for doing this, it sounds like one, safety, 'cause like you said, you wouldn't plug into, plug into this if it was in your house, so like it'd just be that unsafe. And also, um, community improvement, so that we can have better festivals and, and that kinda thing? Is that the, just, the rationale and justification?
So this was the first phase of basically the downtown revitalization? And I wasn't here for a lot of that planning, but what I'm assuming is as typical in most cities is in revitalizing your downtown and trying to make it a center point, both culturally and, and an activity, you try to add amenities that, that make that happen. And so inclusive in that was to provide electric receptacles for festivals and those types of things. It gives you the flexibility to have that throughout your downtown, particularly along Holden Street. That was installed in Phase One. But for whatever reason, the infrastructure has deteriorated to the point that it's not safe. And that was fixed and changed in the next phases of the downtown revitalization. But we haven't ever gone back and fixed what deteriorated from that first one. And so basically what we're into now is, as, as Main Street planned Burf Fest, they're limited on where they can put those vendors because they're limited on where they can provide the electricity. Because we never came back and fixed the deterioration of electrical infrastructure in Phase One. And so that's why it was budgeted. We budgeted the seventy thousand. At that time, we got estimates from electricians. We felt seventy thousand was a good number to, to budget. But because we weren't able to get it to that because of other higher priority projects throughout the community, now that we're back to that, our budget isn't sufficient to be able to do that. So again, we have the choice. We can either shelf it and wait till we have the money to budget, and then it would probably be more expensive the longer we wait. Or staff does have the ability with some spending that we're not spending that was approved in the budget, that we can make up that thirty-eight thousand and get it done and have it done in time for Burf Fest this year.
So.
That was, uh, that was the question. I was, thank you for answering that, 'cause that was my first question on it. I agree it's gonna get more expensive. I had an opportunity to reach out to Jill, the director of Main Street, and just chat through with her, and she's supportive of it, and I agree. And I recall when we were trying to do art walks while we're doing them, but one of the times when we're setting up in front of Rise to get electricity, to have the gentleman who's gonna play, you know, to bring folks down and do, that's a struggle. So, um, you know, thinking through these issues, I'm supportive of it. I think the cost is only gonna go up. And so if we have the, the funds elsewhere, then no one's gonna, you know, one budget's not gonna hinder on it. I think it's supportive of the revitalization or the continued vitalization of Main Street.
Can you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Good. Moved it to second.
Pass it to second reading.
By title.
Do I have to say it that way?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Motion to move to second reading.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
No. This is just to move it to second reading?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. My bad.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I screwed up, yeah.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and Respec Construction Incorporated, under the terms and conditions of the Contractor Services Agreed, Agreement dated June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the downtown electrical upgrade Phase One project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Abstain.
Well, isn't that option? 'Cause I don't.
Unless you have an investor reason.
Either a yes or no.
You're over there, so.
You can certainly choose to abstain if you, if you so feel the need.
'Cause I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't feel I know enough right now.
Jacobs?
No.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Moving on to other business. Budget requests from, from boards, commissions, and contract agencies fiscal year two thousand twenty. Budget requests from boards, commissions, and contract agencies. Mr. Matthew.
Mayor, members of City Council, we've invited boards, commissions, and contract agencies to the council meeting today to make up to five-minute presentations on the FY twenty budget request. These requests ought to be included in FY twenty budget. Last year, the request for community funding came in at a hundred and seventy-one thousand. This year, they are coming in at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. We have a few, a few members representing those commissions and contract agencies here today. I guess we can start with Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Talk with. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Give him a five minute.
I appreciate you having me here to speak today, and all of us actually that are requesting money. I've been around the horn here in Warrensburg, so I know everybody that receives it appreciates it too. I prepared documents for you. I know, I think most, all of you, I do, with the exception of Doug Harris, that's not Doug Harris here. You probably remember, but I just wanna remind you that I took over as executive director at Big Brothers, Big Sisters on January one. So the first quarter has been quite an adventure for me. We've covered a lot of ground. You know, Stormy was there for eighteen years, so things are different. I think that we've had big success. The documents pretty much speak for the program. I really wanna open up for questions, just in case there's something that you don't know or you wanna know more about. I will tell you that I have covered for the case manager side for two months. So that really opened my eyes to how important this program is in our community. I thought I knew, but until I was making phone calls and hearing real live testimonies, I did include a quote in my letter from a twelve-year-old boy that I hope you'll pay attention to because that really speaks loudly to me. And I will share just briefly another, I did make a phone call to one of our bigs who is twenty. His little is thirteen and going through some really, really hard times at home. Dad's incarcerated, potential of coming out. He, um, he shared a lot with me, and I think it really made him feel good to do so. So not to go into too much detail, but I want you to know that he did tell me that more than one time, mom has contacted him because this young man and mom have been in a conflict, and they reached out and called his big brother, and this young guy went over and helped mediate the situation. And I don't know about you guys, but just the thought of that happening, and the three of them sitting at a table discussing this and working this through, and then the little brother hanging out and getting ice cream with his big brother, rather than storming out of the house and tearing up the park or, you know, whatever. So it's real life. I, when I speak, and I do as many times as I can, I remind people that these kids are in school with your kids or grandkids. You know, they're part of our community, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Um, big, excuse me, Big Brother, Big Sister, there's no amount, but is it in the packet that you're asking for from the council that you do every year?
Yes, it's in the letter, too.
Fifty-six hundred. Yeah, fifty-six hundred.
Okay, I didn't read the whole letter, I was trying to listen here.
Twenty twenty.
Sorry.
It's in the last, the last page of.
My bad.
Fifty-six hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dana?
I don't.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go, uh, basically easy to. I don't know if you know the, uh, street for the base, what, uh, base of the unit council.
Okay, got it. I'm with you. Sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to be here this evening. Always appreciate this opportunity to really say thank you, and to say thank you to the city, to say thank you to the city staff for all of their partnership throughout the years. We, as truly as a team effort, and you've heard me say that many, many times before, economic development just doesn't happen in one office or three people. It really does take a village to make economic development happen, and we appreciate all of, all of your efforts. We really do, so. This year's request for J C E D C will be for the same amount that we have requested for the last thirteen years and maybe even before that, because I wasn't here before that. So, um, but it is in the amount of seventy-five thousand, and we know that, and we recognize that you have many places to spend your funds and many quality places to spend your funds. And we greatly appreciate the choices that you have to make, and we hope that we are providing value in exchange for that choice here. Some of the things that we've been working on in the past have been strategic planning last year. We've, we've kinda been through all of that. But a great effort by a lot of people, about sixty volunteers and eighty advantage to go through a very extensive strategic plan, our Johnson County Plan for Growth two thousand twenty-one, and the five new goals that we have as a result of that. And so based on the workload, we have a hundred and sixty work items. You've heard me say that before, but that makes me wanna cringe some days. But we have a great group of volunteers and a great group of staff, and of course, you guys are, are there to partner with us along the way as well, and so we always appreciate that. Our core mission has always been business retention, business expansion, and business attraction. The Dollar Tree Distribution Center Project obviously is a great example of the, and, and Break Time is a great example of the business attraction, but it's the day in, day out. Assisting small business owners with their needs, with one-on-one technical counseling. We had twenty-nine small business counseling customers last year, and we're gonna step that up this year along with talent and placemaking, and we're gonna need all of our partners to be on board for those two new goals as well. Recent projects I did wanna just highlight, since I didn't have the opportunity the last time we were together. So these are the new investor perspectives for the opportunity zone. For those that aren't aware, Warrensburg does have an opportunity zone. We are in the twelve percent across the nation that has the chance to drive investment for those individuals and businesses that have capital gains, and they wanna shelter those capital gains and invest in the west side of our Warrensburg community. They have a great opportunity, and I don't wanna say opportunity like four thousand times, but in the opportunity zone, there's many, many business projects, housing projects, and also infrastructure projects that we have been looking at for projects in that opportunity zone. We are building a website along with the print materials that you see, and city staff and G I S has been wonderful about doing our static mapping and our interactive mapping that has been a part of the opportunity zone marketing. We have lots more to come. I have, um, if you want any more details, I'll be around after the meeting. I don't wanna take up my five minutes, but I have the whole work plan. If you've not seen it, it's three and a half pages. I don't do anything in summary form, you guys know that, right? And so if you wanna stop and pick one of those up, I'm happy to share those with you. Then you can kinda see where, where we've been and where we're going with regard to the opportunity zone marketing effort. So I'm happy to answer any questions. If you know of anybody that's interested in investing, send them to me. We wanna make sure that we get them plugged in and the projects and get their funds created and do what we need to do to mobilize those investments in our community. Do you want me to do Whitman, too?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, I'm taking off my J C E D C hat, and I'm putting on my Whitman Area Leadership Council hat. For those that don't know, I'm the staff administrative person for Whitman Area Leadership Council. Whitman Area Leadership Council, um, if I can find their, yes, I do have handouts. Whitman Area Leadership Council is an organization, it's a five oh one C three organization that is formed to support Whitman Air Force Base, and really to, to, not just the men and women that serve and their families, but also to really keep our base viable, to keep it growing, to make sure that we're making strategic decisions about growth of the base, keeping what we have. Harold serves on that group, as well as a couple of other folks in the region, and they have a new website. It's at supportwhitman.com. I have, I do have a few handouts. Thank you, Lund. Uh, every year, they request, three thousand dollars is the request for Whitman Area Leadership Council. This year, we have done more this year and last year than we have done in a couple of years in the past. We have a new website. We're taking, we're doing what we need to do to talk to our congressional delegation. We're going to the Pentagon. We're educating ourselves by attending conferences and the other things that we need to do in order to remain current on the needs of the Air Force and, um, and its personnel in the broadest sense. So I think that's about it. You wanna add anything, Harold, since I'm stumbling a little bit?
No, just again, it's, uh, Whitman Area Leadership Council is an organization like many others that expectations are high but funding is low.
Yeah.
And again, this is our opportunity to reach out to decision makers with regards to our base and its missions, its staffing, its infrastructure improvements, et cetera. And so this does provide a good avenue for, in our community, and make sure that voice is heard. We have several different organizations that support the base, and each one of them have their, their important roles. And this one is very important in the fact that it's our face to the Pentagon, and particularly talking to our congressional representatives in B C in their offices. And as she said, attending conferences and being visible there and seeing that we're reactive and we care. And then they bring back, as I've discussed, as I've gone to this conference, brought back ideas as far as things that we need to do to maintain our sustainability of the community as, for the future in order to be a support for the base. And that's where we get a lot of that information, and Whitman Area Leadership Council puts us in position to, to hear that information and then to share our opinions with the decision makers on things that need to be done at the base, so.
They do have a new strategic plan, which is, um, it's about thirty-plus pages. I think I just copied about three pages out of that strategic plan. So the copies that you have, if you need more, let me know. Or you wanna, you want the full package of strategic plan for that organization, I'm happy to provide it. It's not on the website yet, we need to get it up there. But we're also, we're also responsible for their website. J C E D C does all their web stuff for them, so if you need anything, let me know. Any other questions? Thank you, Harold, I appreciate the help. All right, thanks, guys, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thanks.
I give it and I take it away.
Next, um, do we have a representative from Oaks? I didn't see you, sorry. Hi, uh, Pioneer Trails? Good evening. My name's Norman Lucas, I'm the executive director at your regional planning commission, Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission. I want to thank you for your support in the years past, and I expect that you probably have a copy of the contract that you can take a look at and see some of the things that the Pioneer's Regional Planning Commission does on behalf of the city of Warrensburg. I'm here to not just thank you for your support in the past, but also to assure you that we do more than what's just captured in that little bit of verbiage in the contract. Beyond helping with trails in the area, the big one being the Spirit Trail, of course, and doing a little bit of, in the way of, a little bit in the way of G I S services when the city needs those bits of help, we also coordinate with MODOT so that those needs that the city might have can become part of the regional transportation plan and ultimately become part of the state transportation improvement plan. So we work quite a bit and work with Mr. Coleman, who's been a prior chair of the Transportation Advisory Council, which is hosted by your regional planning commission. We also provide opportunities for your police department and your fire department to apply for grants for homeland security deployable assets which may be useful in Warrensburg and may also wind up useful in the rest of the region in the case that there's an emergency somewhere that requires that equipment to go to a place that's in, in need of services or need of assistance in an emergency nearby. So we do these functions and several others, and I just wanted to make myself available to you if you have any questions, and also want to let you know that we appreciate your support thus far. and also want to let you know that we appreciate your support thus far. And I very much appreciate having Harold on our board so that when we take a look at items that are important to the entire region, Warrensburg has a strong voice in all of that. We also work very closely in conjunction with Tracy and her organization because the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is the document that drives much of what we do at the Regional Planning Commission when it comes to economic development. And we want for the economic development of our region to dovetail nicely with the wonderful strategic plans that you all have and with all of the plans across the region, and that is our goal. And we work very hard towards that goal, as you might imagine. Any questions?
I'll add here that this is one of the few where we'll see an increase. So one of the things that we discussed as a board was the dues membership costs. And those were based off of census numbers from 2000 and updated when the new numbers came out in 2010. This is one of the downfalls of growing and being successful in growth. Warrensburg saw the biggest increase of all the numbers of Pioneer Trails as far as dues, which I think indicates we've grown the most since then. And so, you'll see an increase of from 5,000 to 6,800. And a lot of that has to do with catching up with the census numbers from 2000. And then those will be reassessed when the 2020 numbers come out. And hopefully, we all go fifteen, twenty years again before we update off of the population formula.
Questions for Norm?
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Next, we got a tree board. I'm not sure if we have anyone here.
Suzie's here. I saw Suzie.
Hello. Good evening. The tree board is up and running and doing its thing, and we are applying for another trim grant this year. So that's specifically what some of those spunes are, as well as some of our outreach and promotion, buying the trees that we give away and raffle at Earth Day and Arbor Day, that kind of thing. I'm happy to answer any questions for you, especially about the trim grant. We're excited about that. That grant is going to be working on trimming and pruning and possibly removing some of the trees along Holden that were damaged in the heavy snow. And then, as you may or may not know, our friends at Main Street are also working on it, another trim grant for the planting trees on Pine Street. But thankfully, we've got a great consultant in our community forester at Missouri Department of Conservation to help us with those. So he's been working with both of us. But any questions about the tree board?
I might also add to the commentary. There's, Davey, number two, has performed a tree interview for you, or tree treatment in the right way. There now is available software program that we can put that in, if we're going on. And maybe develop a page and then provide and call to you for that software.
Thank you very much. That's actually really exciting. Amanda, who used to be here and was just brilliant at what she did, we don't have that same expertise on our tree board and currently on staff. And so, this software called Treekeeper, Treekeeper Eight, I think it's called, will be accessible, obviously, to city staff, but it will also be accessible at a certain level to the public so that they will be able to see, you know, identify those trees, be able to know what trees are along their street, and also be able to say, hey, I think this tree needs attention, or this tree is gone now, that kind of thing. So it'll be in some way, a way that the public can also help us maintain those city street trees. So that's exciting. Thank you, Slim. I get excited about trees. Want to talk anymore about trees?
Any more questions for Suzie?
Thank you.
Depot renovation?
Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Brett Penrose. I'm the city's representative to the Depot Renovation Board. The Depot Renovation, Preservation, and Maintenance Corporation is a public foundation qualifying as a 501(c)(3) organization. The board's original purpose was to renovate the historic Missouri Pacific Railroad Depot. The Depot Renovation, Preservation, and Maintenance Corporation began as a chamber committee. It transformed into a separate charitable foundation in order to raise needed funds. Between 1985 and 1992, the board raised nearly $400,000 from community businesses and individuals for their mission. With the city's continued investment, Dr. Maureen O'Carre's endowment and grants obtained from both MoDOT and Amtrak, the board has invested over $100,000 in the past eight years for maintenance and improvements for the depot. Significant investments in recent years include the replacement of the roof, renovation of the Jack Moore Community Room, replacement of windows, restroom repairs, replacement of the threshold at the east entrance, repairing exterior lights, adding a dusk-to-dawn light for the flag, and replacement of lighting fixtures and ceiling tiles in the passenger waiting area. This year, the board has undertaken the removal of the lead-based paint and repainting the ceiling of the canopy on the north platform area. The contractor performing the work is Stratton Painting, and they started their work in late April. There's approximately 256 square feet of the canopy ceiling that will need paint removed and new paint applied. Work is currently underway on the first section at the farthest west end of the depot. Also, with the Amtrak grant this year, the board is making cosmetic changes to the Jack Moore Community Room, including adding a new chair rail, replacing blinds, repairs to the Amtrak waiting area, and the cleaning of the walls and floors. A future project the board plans to undertake is to make repairs and reseal the sandstone where needed to protect the outside of the building. The Depot Renovation Board requests that the city would again this year make a $5,500 annual investment to the depot. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President of the question?
Hi, I'm Kristen Dyer. I'm the Staff Liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission. Our kind of modest budget request is actually shortened from our previous year. It has gone down almost $2,000. And basically, the mission for the Preservation Commission is to promote the cultural and historic resources of our community. Each of our members are required to attend some training session throughout the year. So this would actually allow three members to go to the Historic Preservation Commission Conference, or sorry, Historic Preservation Conference, which will be held somewhere in the Ozarks this coming year. So this will allow for two one-day trainings and one full conference for our Preservation Commissioners, as well as attend our certified local government forum in Jefferson City for two of our commissioners. Some of the items that we have kept are some of our advertising and promotional items for the Historic Preservation Month. We do partner with Warrensburg Main Street. And we also present the notable structures and preservation opportunities. And in the past, we have done the Architectural Scavenger Hunt. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to start with Berkfest. So I just kind of have a bullet point sheet here about Berkfest. This is the seventh year for Berkfest. Berkfest started in 2012. It's held on the last weekend of September, in case anybody didn't know that already. We see about 5,000 to 7,000 people come to Berkfest every year. We have seventy-seven, sorry, seven, community partners that help us plan Berkfest every year. So it's not just Main Street sitting at the table planning this festival. But we are kind of the lead agency that kind of gathers the group and kind of sets the vision for the festival. Normally, we have over thirty-five vendors participating. Every other year, we try to incorporate UCM with a pep rally on a Friday night and then on Warrensburg High School on the alternating years on the Friday night to kick off the festival. Starting last year, our kids' area became a free event, and it will stay that way again this year. We have live music entertainment. And we always try to find local talent to fill those spaces on the main stage. This year, the Warrensburg Wheels Car Show is bringing their big annual car show into Berkfest, which should add another level of attendance. We always apply for grants when we're planning for the festival, along with getting local sponsors and in-kind donations. So if you have any questions about Berkfest or the funding level, I'm happy to answer that.
Do I have any questions or comment that is just genuine on the kids' area? Last year, it seemed to be less. Are we looking at changing that up a bit or more family-oriented?
Last year is the only year I have not been part of Berkfest. But the thought process was if they wanted to make it free, so they kind of lessened the amount of activities in order to make that free. The location, I'm not sure where it was last year, but this year it will be on Market Street, right in front of the courthouse, so right off of Holden Street. So it'll kind of be separated from where the live music and Beer Garden, that kind of activities, those will be behind the Johnson County Courthouse this year. And then on Friday night, we're going to have free movies. And on Saturday, we'll have the kind of the bounce house, you know, kids' area face painting, that kind of thing.
One of the big challenges there is, like many things, is that we can do as much work as we have volunteers to help with.
That's right.
When we don't have volunteers, it makes it difficult to provide those at the level that some of the community expects.
Right.
That's one of the challenges. And I think last year was also the first year of the transition.
Correct.
With the Big Sisters not taking responsibility for that section as well.
Right, right. Any other questions?
How about teenagers? Is there anything planned for them?
Yeah, the only plan that I have added to Berkfest this year for teenagers is that movie. So we'll have a kind of a GPG movie. And then later in the evening, we will do like a PG-13, hoping to kind of get that middle school, early high school crowd down to the festival. It is an away football game on that Friday night for the high school, so you're going to lose a certain percentage of kids in that aspect, anyway. Okay, I'll put on my Main Street hat then. So last month, I believe, in your council packet was the report, our... We do a bi-yearly report for you guys. And I think, if I remember correctly, that wasn't last week, last council meetings packet. So I did not recap all that, but I did do some bullet points. We always appreciate the city and the council's support of Warrensburg Main Street. We do know that we do ask for a big amount of money from the city, but we, excuse me, feel like this continued partnership is vital to our success of Main Street and the Central Business District. I just recapped our mission down there. It's to promote, improve, and preserve the unique character and economic vitality of downtown Warrensburg while embracing our growing community. We do this in a variety of ways. We follow what is set forth by the state and national Main Street models. That's what we follow. As a direct result of the city's partnership, we're able to accomplish all of our goals and even to expand our scope of work in the downtown. And that's what I'm going to kind of go over in my five minutes here. Every year, we go through an accreditation process with the state-level Main Street and the national-level Main Street. Warrensburg Main Street is one of seven accredited Main Street in the state of Missouri, which is actually a pretty big accomplishment. And we have received our accreditation again for this year. We work hard in all aspects of our organizations to bring people to downtown. We create inspiring community relationships and make our cash registers ring. This in turn increases tax-based income for the city and our community. We have other sources of funding at Main Street. It's just not primarily through our partnership with the city. Our partnership campaign that we had in 2018, at the end of 2018, we had eighty-five partners inside and outside of our district that gave funding to our organization. We also have a grant from Missouri Arts Council and the USDA this year as well. We have three income-producing properties in downtown, and we also have an incubator space that we facilitate that shares the office upstairs with us. We also have two fundraisers throughout the year, our Piccadilly and our Farm to Table. And then we also seek out some event sponsors and in-kind donations. So we also participate as Warrensburg Main Street in the Love What's Local Committee, and we also run the Warrensburg Farmers Market out of our office. We are a volunteer-based organization. We have over thirty volunteers every month that commit to coming to meetings, event planning, all those types of things. So that's every month, we have over thirty people helping us out. And then in 2018, we logged almost 3,000 volunteer hours, and you can see that that equals over $70,000. And then in the first three months of 2019, we've already had 603 volunteer hours, and that is equal to over $15,000. We are asking for $41,000 again this year, and we hope you will consider funding our request to continue strengthening the economic growth of downtown. Any questions? Thank you.
Next, we have a request for $500 from the Stevenson Fund for the Teachers Warehouse.
This is a request from Teachers Warehouse. It's become an annual request for $500. And with this money, they purchase supplemental supplies for the classrooms. This warehouse does depend on volunteers, and they rely greatly on contributions. So anyway, I know I get thank you notes from them throughout the year, from different teachers. They really appreciate our help, so.
I move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Land?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item under Other Business is a discussion of medical marijuana ordinance. Discussion requested by Jerry Franklin. Barb, I think, is leading the show.
Steph has provided a few materials along with Mr. Franklin. We have separate discussions, though, so the two points that I would like to raise that are in the staff report are, the state has now finalized their rulemaking. As of early June, those went into effect. And so, with that, as we anticipated in January, when we adopted our ordinance locally, there is a need to make some changes to be consistent with rules that the state produced. And first among those is, in our ordinance, we had provided a method of measuring all of the buffer distances, whether that was the 250 feet from "Look or Buy the Drink" or the 1,000 feet from the schools, daycares, libraries, and churches, a method of measuring from the front door of the marijuana use to the front door of the other use. So for instance, the front door of a church, straight line path to the front door of the dispensary. And that language is in our local ordinance, a straight-line measurement. When the state wrote their language and provided their method of measuring, they came up with a much more complicated process. And we provided that language in the staff report. But to summarize, you would measure along the lawfully, the shortest, lawfully traveled path of a pedestrian. And then they further spelled out how that would be, whether it would be from the wall of the building or a property line or what you would do with a strip mall scenario, a lot of different types of scenarios to measure that path of travel. So staff has provided in your packet a diagram that looks like this. So staff has provided in your packet, um, a diagram that looks like this, and literally just to even understand what the state wrote, I haven't thought out, and, um, this would be how you would measure any of their types of uses, uh, for dispensary, for a cultivation facility, for a manufacturing, uh, facility for infused products, or for a testing facility. They did alter it slightly, uh, for transportation facilities, and I'll get to those here in a minute, but, um, so I've used the word dispensary and school in the examples, but you can substitute that with infused product manufacturing facility, or cultivation facility, or daycare, um, or church, uh, all of those would be interchangeable. So, with this method of measuring, um, every case is going to be slightly different, because some will be freestanding, some will be strip malls, uh, or office buildings, or incubator spaces in, in a manufacturing facility, you, you just don't know what the situation might be. Um, so we needed to change our method of measuring, uh, and we are working on an ordinance, drafting an ordinance that would do that, because it changes rezoning requirements, it's required to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first, and then to City Council. Uh, so we'll go to this, planning and zoning next week, and then come forward to City Council as formal ordinance. Uh, we're just introducing you to this concept this evening, because it is complicated, and we wanted to give you in the public some time with that. Um, one thing I would point out, uh, in the state's measurement is, is the second map that we've provided, um, this is a black and white copy, but we've got an aerial, a color photo of the aerial. So the straightest, uh, the shortest distance between two points would be a straight-line measurement. Um, when you start following a path of travel, in most cases, that distance is going to get longer, not shorter. So this aerial is, is an example, uh, using our GIS system. The point on the north, uh, we took the corner of, uh, the, uh, Glasscock Shopping Center, that's where the Glasscock Jewelry Business is. Uh, we went from that building, uh, front door, generally speaking, front door, straight-line measurement to the front, up door of the Lutheran Church, to the southwest. Uh, straight-line measurement is about nine hundred and ten feet. When we use the state's rules and method of measuring, uh, you would go out, parking lot to the, to the street intersection, cross the street to the south, and then take the sidewalk down along, um, so you go from the wall of the building to the property line of the church. Uh, lawfully-traveled path gives you a total of about twelve hundred feet. So in the way that the city measured, it was under the one thousand-foot buffer. In the way that the state measures, it will be over the one thousand-foot buffer, making that then an acceptable location for, uh, a medical marijuana use.
So is there, I mean, I kind of just curious to the word lawful, because I was thinking if I was going to walk from that Lutheran church to Glasscock, I'm cutting through those parking lots.
Right.
Now, am I lawfully allowed to do that, is my, by the definition, what's the rule here?
You're not, you, it's not illegal to do that, but if that property owner wanted to cut off access and not allow that, he could. So, uh, we believe that court's interpretation of lawful travel will be along public right-of-way.
So sidewalks, streets.
Sidewalks, alleys, um, it could be some easements, depending on how those easements were written and dedicated initially, but public parking lots and public streets and alleys and right-of-way is how we're interpreting that.
Okay.
I thought in the thing, you actually mentioned something about that specifically, but maybe I'm misremembering.
They may have, but I didn't understand it. There's a lot of verbiage there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, it is a law.
Yeah.
It is a law, yes, I agree.
I figure we got the police chief and the attorney.
The other, uh, change, and this is the second point, uh, that the staff is working on a change to the ordinance is, in the rulemaking, the state created a fifth medical marijuana use that was not created in Amendment Two and approved by the voters. Um, that fifth u- use is for a transportation facility. So Amendment Two just said, um, you had to have, be certified to transport, and now the state has spelled out how you would become certified, and in doing that, created this fifth use and provided buffer requirements for it, similar to the other four uses it created originally. Um, and then it changed the way you ma- measure the fifth one, as opposed to the other four. So we're also drafting that change into the ordinance to create a transportation, medical marijuana transportation facility use, um, provide a parking requirement, um, state what you, zoning districts it's allowed to be in, and, um, and the buffer requirements for it, same as consistent with the others, so, uh, very similar to how we treated the first four uses, um, but we did need to get that added in since it was a new use. So those would all be coming to you at your next council meeting. For sure, we need to do the address of arguments. Do you have questions about that part? If not, we might as well.
Jerry, you had requested to, uh, to talk to us about this, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and distinguished counsel. Get a little sore throat, want to compliment Barbara for her explanation of the changes and clarity that the state has, uh, uh, passed down that wasn't clear in January, when you took action on, on these matters. I've sent a detailed letter to, uh, City Manager Harold. Do we want to read that, or have the clerk read it, or, let me ask, is it in each of your packets?
Yeah.
It's in our packet.
Should the audience hear it, do you think?
Please, if you'd like to read it, we'd love to hear it in your words.
I'll do that. Bear with me. I don't, can you hear when I'm pointing this way? All right. This is a letter, uh, June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to Mr. Harold Stewart, City Manager Warrensburg, one oh-two South Holden, via Cindy Gamble, City Clerk email. Uh, reference medical marijuana dispensaries. Dear City Manager Stewart, Harold, we're on a first-name basis outside of here. Thank you for placing the above reference on the agenda for the City Council meeting of June twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. This will give the council an opportunity to revisit the issue, hear further comment, have a better understanding of the law as it pertains to what the state mandates and what it does not, and in my view, correct an error made at the January council meeting relating to distance requirements from legal and licensed medical marijuana dispensaries to churches, daycares, and schools. We can't agree that the ballot language presented to the voters was poorly written, I'm talking about to, by the state to the voters of Missouri. As such, it not only caused confusion among the voters, but when passed and left to the municipalities to deal with, caused an additional level of confusion and misunderstanding. We can further agree that proposals that become law most often contain items of compromise. Legislators on each side of the issue compromise to get legislation passed that they can mostly agree with. I believe that was the case in passing medical marijuana dispensary law and guidelines. Some would not want to allow medical marijuana dispensaries at all. It is often out of fear of what may happen someday with recreational marijuana. The voters said, yes, we want to provide that legal medical option to people who want it and need it. Others believe that medical marijuana dispensaries should be zoned as pharmacies, prescription dispensaries are zoned. Put me in that camp. Still others believe that with certain distance requirements, medical marijuana dispensaries have a place in our community. To date, municipalities are all over the board. Many have not taken up the issue. Others have decided on zero distance requirements, zoned in general business as other pharmacies are zoned. While still others have put distances from some of the protected users, churches, schools, and daycares, and not put distance requirements from others, or choose to apply different distance requirements from each protected user. I have done substantial research through communications with the state. I have sought and received counsel from an attorney that sits on the committee that writes the guidelines for the state to administer and provide direction. Yes, that attorney may be an applicant, but he, in my view, is the most informed. Because applicants for a license to dispense medical marijuana require real estate that is properly zoned and situated in a location that the applications committee must approve, I've had numerous conversations with would-be applicants. As you know, that's my business, commercial real estate. I have reached out to every sitting council member, distinguished members here, and former council members. I've reached out to daycare operators, adjacent neighbor, neighbors to possible dispensaries, and people on the street. I can report that with proper oversight, the consensus is much different than someone would have us believe that medical marijuana is the devil's doing. The owners of the daycares said they would not object to a medical marijuana dispensary being closer than one thousand feet to their business. In fact, when asked about specific properties that have qualified, were in sight of their businesses, they still did not object. They did comment that they did not know how some of their customers would feel, understandable. Properties owners adjacent to a possible dispensary, if the ordinance is changed, did not object at all to being next door. They volunteered the comment, zone as pharmacies are zoned. They volunteered the comment without prompting, zone as pharmacies are zoned, and again, they're next door to a would-be pharmacy. They did appreciate the asking. I haven't found a single person that believes, if properly licensed by the state, that people that need, want relief from medical condition, and their doctor issued a prescription, prescription that visiting a medical marijuana dispensary presented any threat to schools, daycares, or churches, even if the distance from one to the other was less than a thousand feet. I have not specifically talked to any clergy, but I have talked to people who go to church, like I do. I have talked with Johnson County Health, and they do not take a position. I have talked to our sixth school district representative, and they do not take a position, but the superintendent did voice opinion, as a private citizen, that he would prefer the one thousand-feet distance buffer to schools remain. He did not have an objection to a specific location being in sight of Sterling School. Of course, answers can be driven by how the questions were framed and asked. If asked in connection with recreational marijuana, a different response is likely. Council tells me that recreational marijuana, if and when it is ever legalized in Missouri, should be dealt with differently. Perhaps another level of zoning and regulation. And when I say council, I don't mean city council, I mean legal council, and it's spelled correctly. Let's not yell fire in a crowded room, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. While protecting the health and safety of our citizens, let's take a healthy Warrensburg-is-open-for-business approach. As it should, the city has reached out for comment. It's not clear to me whom all received the letter, some did, and some did not. The letter addressed to whom it may concern was simply signed City of Warrensburg. My concerns are, who drafted the letter, how were the targeted recipients chosen, and if the single issue to address, I guess my issue, and then Barbara alluded to other issues, which I respect and under, better understand now, to address at the council meeting of the twenty-fourth is medical marijuana dispensaries and the buffer distances to churches, daycares, and schools. Why then were the terms new cultivation, infused products, manufacturing, or testing facility used? Could the letter as crafted inflame a different response? I think it could. I've not ever used marijuana, don't expect I ever will. I do support easy access for those that seek legal relief for a medical condition that in consultation with their doctor may bring a higher quality of life. I do believe, I do not believe that it is a threat to anyone. I do support reasonable zoning that allows for new businesses. I do support protecting the health and safety of our community. I do support amending the ordinance to, to allow zoning of medical marijuana dispensaries to be the same as other pharmacies, as many other communities have chosen to do so. Our democracy works, even with its flaws. Respectful discussion is not a threat, apathy is. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion and seek change. I'll take some questions, and then I have a couple of stories related to this I'd share, you haven't asked many questions tonight, but ask me some. No question. Well, today, in January, um, Warrensburg was ahead of the curve, I think. Uh, not many other municipalities have take, has yet taken a stand. And so I guess you could, uh, be complimented for leading. We now know at the time you led under misinformation, that's now been clarified by the state. Don't know if the audience knows, but, uh, it was my impression, I was here, that it was your understanding that the state mandated these distances. We now know they did not, they've issued that correction in writing. They give you, this council and other municipalities, the right to set your own distances, including zero. Here is some quotes from, uh, the Branson Trilex News. Some of you know I'm a heavy investor in Branson, as I am here, so I take the paper, I'm interested in what, uh, the council does. And, um, their city manager, uh, Lee Beck, you know him, Harold, he's fairly new down there. But he makes some comments, and here and I quote, that he wants, the city will be able to treat facilities like any other business that requires a business license. He goes on to say, we're gonna have a business license to operate within the city, just like any other business, he repeated himself, or the paper did. If I'm a dispensary, I'm no different than someplace like Dick's Five and Ten, selling souvenirs. And he goes on to talk about people who want marijuana have to be qualified patients. Maybe I can bring it back around with a couple of, uh, uh, real-life stories. Most of you know that I've been involved with, uh, people with mental and physical challenges for forty-five years. And so, but some people, when they hear that, they say, well, I thought you were a Republican. Well, yeah, I'm a compassionate conservative Republican, but I do care for people, and, and so, does that, uh, make me pay more attention to things that are medical? I, I think it does, uh, and I don't apologize for that. And in this case, do I pay more attention because it impacts my business, commercial real estate? Of course it does. But for those two points in my life, would I be here? Maybe not. Hope I'm not apathetic, but maybe not. But, uh, maybe I can explain it this way. I walk into CVS Pharmacy to get my insulin. It's a life-sustaining necessity for me. If I wanted to pull up my shirt and give myself a shot, if I needed to, the law would allow me to do that. There's a daycare across the s- street, there's a daycare around the corner, there's a, what'd I say, Quaside Church, I'm not, that has moved into a building, uh, recently, and there's Sterling School down the street, probably more than a thousand feet. Does anyone believe that I'm a threat to those schoolchildren? Does anyone believe that I'm a threat to those schoolchildren? Does anyone believe that I'm a threat to those churchgoers? I don't think so. Now suppose that a medical marijuana dispensary was in the same location, but this person coming in not only has to have a doctor's prescription, they have to be pre-qualified to buy that product through a doctor's prescription. While I could take my shot standing in the lobby, they're not allowed to take their medication standing in the lobby. So I ask you, are they a threat to the schoolchildren across the street? Are they a threat to the people that go to church there? I don't think so. And so in my belief, this is another situation where it appears the solution is very, very complex, when in fact, it's pretty simple. It's pretty simple when you break it down to that. So I would ask that you consider revising the ordinance and allow licensed, legal, medical marijuana dispensaries to function the same in the general business district as the other pharmacy dispensaries. I think that simplifies the measurement. I don't think we get into measurement then, Barbara. I like that change. I think that made it easier, but if we're doing the same as pharmacies, we don't have to measure. Again, I invite your questions of me.
Are there any other cities besides Kirksville that you're aware of that are past the zero foot?
Yes, and I've sent that to Harold. That's not in your packet?
No, we have several.
Moberly is zero. Kirksville is zero. Most of them are over the board. If they're not zero, they're, I've seen two fifty, I've seen three hundred. Springfield is zero, three hundred, and maybe, did they have a thousand on one protected user, you remember, Harold?
Springfield is two hundred for dispensaries, a thousand for the others.
There you go, yeah. Kansas City is just beginning to discuss it. I can tell you that I just leased space in a medical office building I own there to doctors that are specializing with treatment to their patients using medical marijuana. So they at least thinking that there's going to be a demand, and it's going to be legal, and it's going to be accessible to where people will come there and not go to another community. Of course, after mine, there is some sales tax here, and some think it's going to be big. Remains to be seen. I don't know. I don't have any idea if it will. But I do know this, that if we don't make it easy enough here under the law, then people will go to our neighboring communities for that product. So thank you for the questions.
I agree with you that, you know, you're with your insulin example there, that, you know, that no, the pharmacy is not a threat. And the person getting the medical marijuana is not a threat, because they're going to take it to their house. What my concern is, is that the huge neon sign that's advertising it is something that causes the kids to go, "What's that? Why is, you know, marijuana? What is that?" You know? Now, as a parent, I say it gives me an opportunity for a discussion, but sometimes there's discussions I want to have with my kids, and it's not that moment in time. You know, so that's kind of my concern with, you know, with that thousand-feet barrier.
Of course, the signs are within the code.
Well, right, you're right. We have, I know that.
And the fact that a protected user is a thousand feet, they're going to drive by the subject. They're going to drive by the subject whether it's across the street, or a thousand feet, or two thousand feet. And so, you know, they drive by liquor establishments, they drive, you know.
And then my other concern is I've read several articles in major newspapers and stuff that have stated that there are companies that are moving in here, and it sounds like you just gave us an example of this happening in Kansas City, you know, because some of the major hospitals are saying, "We're not going to allow our doctors to write this prescription, but we will allow our doctor to say, 'Go talk to so-and-so over here,' and you go there, and he says, 'Cut me a check for two hundred bucks, and here's your privacy, here's your release for privacy statement.'" They get it, he looks at it, and goes, "Yep, you qualify. There you go." So, you know.
Brian, that's not all that unusual.
Well, I know it's not, right.
People go to specialists for their dialysis. The hospital doesn't do dialysis. They have to go to, and we've got one here, DCI in town. They go there, they go for specialties for cancer. Even now, they go on specialties for nutrition and diet.
Right.
To help with diabetes. So the fact there's a specialty off-campus of a hospital is not unique at all.
One of the key differences there is those specialists they go to have gone through college and studying and internships and all those types of things, which is not going to occur in this case. You know, my history and background with pharmacies, I worked as a licensed pharmacy technician for the state of Kansas for a late at the Medical Center while I was going through college. I was a pre-pharmacy student, and I worked side-by-side with pharmacists all the time. And this is my gripe and my high horse on this issue, is we keep saying we want to treat it as a pharmacist, there will never be anyone in there that's trained specifically on the effects of marijuana, that's gone through the medical studies to determine what the effects are, and to take a patient and say, "What are all the medications you're taking, and what are the effects on that?" And doctors make the best decision they can with the information in front of them. And I've seen a lot of times, I worked late at the Medical Center, that a pharmacist had to call and raise a red flag, "Hold on, are you sure this is what you want to prescribe? Because it's going to have this effect, and it's going to react negatively with this other prescription that you've given. I recommend you give this one instead." That's not going to occur in this situation. And again, as I stated in an email to you previously, the buffers and setbacks was not created by the city. So treating it differently than other pharmacies as far as setbacks from schools and from daycares and churches and public libraries, that was on the ballot language that the state put forward, everyone else. So the state created the situation where those are now being treated differently than normal pharmacies. Now, to correct a point you stated earlier, that the council was misinformed earlier when they took this up. They were not misinformed. Staff informed them that, given the state ballot language, you have the ability to adopt a lower buffer than the thousand feet. But the recommendation of staff at that point was, that was what the voters approved, and staff's recommendation is to maintain it at the thousand feet, and council agreed with that at that time.
I disagree on that. That was in the audience, and others were too. And it was spoken more than once, Mr. City Manager. We have to do this because the state mandates it. It's not true.
I don't recall ever saying that. Fortunately, we have our videos recorded.
Yeah, well, the attorney, the attorney in the audience reached over to me and said, "Jerry, that's not true." But anyway, that's been corrected. But that's, you know, this is, is it controversial? Absolutely, it's controversial. As are a lot of things.
I'll also state that the staff took the standpoint, and we told the council this, this was approved by sixty percent of the voters within the precincts of our community. We did not take an approach to try and keep medical marijuana out of the city of Warrensburg. We tried to develop an approach that allowed it, but allowed it in a reasonable way.
Well, I think that's the discussion, is it a reasonable way? And I would submit to you, if you're concerned about doctors not being schooled, thousand feet doesn't make a difference. Makes no difference. But...
I'm not going to get into your personal opinion on this. I'm just debunking the argument that needs to be treated the same as a pharmacy, because it's not going to be operated the same as a pharmacy. But the state and the voters have already made that decision. We have put ordinances in place that are now, allow each of these medical marijuana usages to be allowed within the boundaries of our community. And the council, I feel, did that in a way that took all factors, it is a complicated issue, and took all factors in and did it in a way that allows that. And we've provided maps here for the council on what our current ordinance allows, and what some potential changes based off of what other communities have done as well for their consideration. The letter went out to all daycares and churches, okay? And it was written in a way to be neutral, okay?
Well, we got one that's right, because we're not a daycare or church.
All we did was tell them that we had a request, and the reason all four of those uses were outlined is because we copied verbatim the language that was on the ballot, which outlined all four of those uses. So we didn't look like we were hiding anything. Again, we tried to keep it as neutral as possible, and that way, if they wanted to come voice their opinions, they can. Because this is a complicated issue, and I think the council needs the opportunity to hear from everybody. And if nobody else shows up, then maybe they don't care. But we have a couple of emails that were sent to us, where staff has forwarded on to the council, and...
Well, I've gone to people on the street.
Can I interject for a moment? Just out of curiosity, of all the people here, how many of you came specifically for this discussion? Could you just raise your hand? Okay. All right, so maybe a fifth-ish?
Well, it's good opportunity to speak.
So, thank you, I do appreciate, appreciate that.
But I'm not going to take an argument with a licensed physician to tell him and her that they're not qualified to write prescriptions. Not going to come from me.
But I would personally like to see one come. I don't know if the city has already mandated only one can be in the city limits, or two or three, or what, if we...
Would you cap a number?
That has more to do with the way it's going to be broken down by congressional districts.
The state determines that. We did not put any cap on there.
Am I recalling correctly, it's twenty-four per district?
Twenty-four per congressional district.
Right, right.
Which would include Columbia, Moberly.
I'm disappointed also that it isn't a pharmacy.
So at least one per college town, I'm guessing?
I think a pharmacy should have, I wasn't, I wasn't able to put that in when I voted yes or no for it, but I do disagree, and it doesn't matter, but I think a pharmacy should have been able to dispense this, but the voters voting...
Well, it's federal, that's why the pharmacist would probably lose his license and go to jail.
Marijuana is still classified as a class-one drug, which puts it in the same category as cocaine, morphine, heroin.
I don't think cocaine's, I think that's class-two. Well, whatever, like, it's bad, that's the...
They're all, that's the level that the federal government still considers marijuana, which keeps pharmacists not wanting to run the risk of dispensing those types of things because they get sucked into potential criminal offenses with that.
Harold, years ago, you and I would be exactly on the same page. We really would. What's changed for me, and I'm going to personalize it, is one, my work with people with mental and physical challenges looking for relief, but also, as you all know, my grandson, that is one of my grandsons severely, severely handicapped, his doctors and people at KU Medical Center have said that they believe medical marijuana could help with his seizures. Why in the heck wouldn't I be for exploring that?
And the voters in Missouri agree with you.
As any parent or grandparent would, so. But, and so that's a change for me. That's a change for me.
And we're not arguing whether or not medical marijuana should be allowed in our community. We've already written ordinances that do allow it. But we're determining this proper time, place, and manner, which the state gives us authority to determine.
Understood. And so we don't, we don't agree on that, that's why we're here, is should it be as inaccessible, less accessible than people going in for any prescription? Should it be less accessible than going in for six-pack of beer? Right now, I believe it is. I don't think it should be. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Let's go through the maps real quick, if we can, and you can do that, or I'm happy to do that, just so that the public is aware of what we are discussing here. And so can we put those towards, kind of just straight against wall? There you go. I think we've all looked at it.
This map is the map of your current required buffers and at the distances they're currently So you have a thousand-foot for any school, child daycare center, church, or public library. That is what the yellow circles are. There's a point in the center, neodrama, a thousand-foot buffer around each of those points. Those have been mapped. Then you have the hundred-feet, no marijuana-related use operated or maintained on any portion of the lot, where any portion of the lot is within a hundred feet of a residentially-zoned district or any public park. So these green, yellow-type areas are your parks and your residentially-zoned areas. And then there is, again, you have to come close to see it, but there's a very light one-hundred-foot buffer around the hard line of the district. So for instance, where it's red here, that's a general business area that would allow, you can have these uses in the general business districts. And in this area, it would look as though, okay, a lot of that's red, it doesn't have a buffer on it, and I could, I could be there. There, this little bit of one-hundred-foot buffer off of these residential areas on the east side of McGuire Street touched that lot, so then it kicks out the whole lot. So all of that east side of McGuire Street down through there, you wouldn't be able to do because a part of the lot is within the hundred-foot. So there are some areas along here and along here, there's no way to map that wording, but it would kick those out. Now, could you replat and do some things, so we can have some options there? Possibly, if it's large enough and has street frontage. And so some of that could come into play, but that'd be a case-by-case scenario we'd have to look at. These smaller ones are delivered by the drink establishments with the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer around them. And then no marijuana-related use, should be operated or maintained within five-hundred-feet of another marijuana-related use, so we don't have any now, so there was nothing I could map for that. Or within five-hundred-feet of an establishment licensed under chapter two, which is our adult use section, and so you don't have any adult-use businesses in town at the moment, and so you had nothing to map for that bullet either. This map shows the exact same types of buffers, and the only change made were on those one-thousand-foot distances on these points for churches, schools, daycares, libraries, that was reduced, the same set of points, but it reduced from a thousand feet down to three hundred feet. So everything else about the map stayed exactly the same.
Thank you, Barb. So what we're looking at is, our existing ordinance is what's on the right. There are many areas that it is permissible in the city of Warrensburg to purchase property, to lease property, to have these established marijuana dispensaries that we're talking about.
So you would be looking at anything that's red without a buffer on it, anything that's light gray, light industrial, that doesn't have a buffer on it, anything central business, which the buffers totally cover, central business, one in that, in the current. And then business office, which is just a little bit around the hospital of that zoning district, neighborhood business, there's just a little bit at the corner of Mitchell and Gay Street, that's own neighborhood business. And some of them are allowed within heavy industrial, and we have a little pocket of that on North Street and a little pocket of that on Pine Street. Those are very, very small districts. So mainly, you're looking at the red and the light gray as places you could have them.
I appreciated these maps a great deal because when I look at it, and so this is part of my thinking, the areas that are allowed are not significantly impacted by the thousand-foot. I definitely see in the center of the top of town, there's some impact, et cetera, but there's still quite a bit of significant area for dispensaries to go in, both north and south and east and west. But at least it gives us a good visual to make better decisions than the verbiage.
And the other thing to note is, with the change in measuring, you should, for the most part, consider the buffer shown as the circle as about the, it could get smaller than that. Because that's the straight line, straight-line measurement. So with the state way of measuring, every little circle is going to cease to be a circle and become a zigzag.
It's going to have to be come to you, and it's going to have to be come to you on every single deal and see what the answer is. I mean, I don't think there's any map you're ever going to put out there to be able to answer that question about coming to the city for you any deal.
So, just so everybody's on the same page, you know, this is what we're here to discuss is, you know, the map on the right is the recommendations from the state of Missouri and what was on the ballot language. Warrensburg has, for the most part, mirrored most of that. We have a request now from Mr. Franklin to... Uh, we have a request now, uh, from Mr. Franklin to, uh, lower our standards all the way down to where it's a, um, much like a pharmacy, um, and so, and then lots of other people that have opinions, uh, all in between, and so I would like to, uh, extend an invitation, uh, brief invitation to anyone else that would like to uh, come forward, uh, and speak in relation to this topic. Uh, we'd last, and we definitely would ask you to keep it brief, just in case everybody wants, uh, to talk, but if anybody would like to uh, discuss, you know, uh, in opposition to Mr. Franklin, or in alliance with Mr. Franklin, or just your general opinion, we would welcome that, uh, and appreciate hearing from you.
Mayor, council members, thank you, my name is Heather Conley. Um, I own, uh, the Learning Garden Child Development Center on Burkhart, uh, the address is five fifteen Burkhart Road. Um, I'm a daycare center. Um, I, uh, as a business, just as a business standpoint, uh, not my personal beliefs or political in any way. Um, I have, I did receive the letter, um, I read the letter with my husband as well. Um, and I did send the letter home to all of my families, as lo- as well as to all of my staff, I have twenty-five staff. I have eighty family members, um, eighty children in my care, and I did get back quite a lot of feedback from families, I do have, um, a mom who is here, I think I did have some family, um, some moms or family members that sent emails. Um, I don't necessarily think that I have families that would pull their children from my care, but if they had the choice, if there was a, uh, medical marijuana dispensary next door, or down the street from me, that they would choose another facility, and that was the response that I got from them. Um, I don't know what their reasonings were, but I think just because of the, um, signage, the advertisement outside of the building, um, I ha- I don't have a problem with having a dispensary in our city. Um, I just think where it is placed in our city is, it, there is other areas that it can be placed. Um, on a daily basis, I see hundreds of children walk up and down Burkhart, walk in and out of our neighborhoods. We are, my staff walk our children in and out of our neighborhoods and up and down Burkhart. And I would just, I feel safe doing it now, I don't know that I would necessarily feel safe if there was one right down the street, a couple buildings away. So, um, I know that I have, um, a parent that's here, um, if she would choose to speak as well, but that is how I feel about it, so if you guys have any questions for me.
You appreciate the show, Natalie, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, city councilman, thank you, uh, my name's Rebecca Schumate. I have a child at the Learning Garden, I love that daycare. The Heather is great, all the teachers are great, my three-year-old absolutely loves going there. But I am not comfortable with having my three-year-old going on a walk and coming home going, mommy, what are these signs for? Or having to drive past and say, him say, mommy, what's this sign, mommy, what is that, what does it do? I have a middle schooler that walks to daycare, or walks to Dairy Queen after school. How much more traffic is that gonna bring down that street? I used to be a bus driver and see kids every day walking down Burkhart and down Foster. How much more dangerous is that road gonna be bringing this in there, thank you.
Carl Bentley, I think if you, you know me. I'm kinda neutral on this, I mean, I understand the city's point of view, it's a kind of a stigma that goes with marijuana, so, um, I just kinda see how the city wants to make sure that they're having a safe, uh, environment for the citizens. Um, but I just wanna give a little bit of insight on some of the things that America, medical marijuana is used for, um, pain control, uh, nerve pain, epilepsy, glaucoma, um, multiple sclerosis, muscle spasms, um, certain types of cancer, um, as we discussed, it's highly regulated by the state, so, um, the unfortunate side of it is, um, like you said, it can be prescribed by just any doctor that's looking to make a quick buck, but I think also, a lot of the people that go to use it, I mean, get the prescription to utilize it, um, use it for the, you know, purposes it's used for. I understand that people have concerns that it's gonna bring a bad element to the area wherever the dispensaries are, but I think a lot of those people are getting it from elsewhere, I mean, unfortunately. Um, I know law enforcement does a good job on making sure that doesn't happen, um, but I think, um, there's a lot of things that, uh, need to go into the thinking more than just where the dispensary is located. The question is, that I see a lot here in Warrensburg, is the difference between CBDs and medical marijuana. Because I didn't know if the city has taken any action on those types of facilities that sell the CBDs, because that's basically the same thing as medical marijuana without the high, so I didn't know if that was ever a thought that the city has thought about taking action on.
The, from a regulatory standpoint, they're significantly different than marijuana.
As far as the.
As far as their, whether or not they're illegal to possess.
And I know the same.
FDA approved, aren't they?
Yeah, and I know that the FDA, I mean, they've have taken steps to approve the medical marijuana as well. It's just that the CBDs don't provide the high that the medical, the THC. Yeah, THC component, so I just didn't know if that was gonna become something that's regulated in the future as well.
It's not something regulated by the state at this time, and so, we we can, we can regulate up to what the state allows us to regulate, or less. Um, but we can't regulate more than what the state allows, and so if it's not illegal in the state of Missouri, then it's can't be illegal in Seattle. Or or otherwise regulated.
Okay, alright, and so I just wanted to kinda get the insight on the people that voted, uh, yes for the, uh, buffer zones, what was your kind of rationale or thinking behind that, or did anybody have a personal preference, or was it just?
I, when I voted, I I was like with smoke shop next to the DMV. We couldn't have it there because they were selling alcohol by the package, that was a prime place for me, I think, that was the one reason, and I got a lot of flack from a lot of, I'm not gonna say my friends, but they're like, you didn't vote for the marijuana to be legal, and I'm like, that's not what I was saying, because Casey had made a motion, or one of them had made a motion, and I wasn't agreeing with that, but you know, next to a bar, I can kinda see, next to a daycare, you know, I can see possibly churches, you know, but there has to be some kind of buffer, I have to agree with that. I think my objection was next to somebody selling packaged liquor. Cause you're gonna buy your marijuana by prescription, and then go home and smoke it, or go somewhere and smoke it, you're not gonna smoke it right there, so, that was, that was what I.
Do you want, Chief, I wonder if I ask you a quick question? So, so we're we're talking about a matter of feet between dispensaries and different locations. Do you, out of curiosity, do you have, and this is on the spot, and I apologize for that, I, the the question didn't occur to me till now. But what percentage of marijuana come in this state probably comes from Mexico?
I wouldn't have any way of quantifying that, um, some comes from there, but the United States is actually one of the largest exporters of marijuana, so it's mostly homegrown.
Okay, so the, I guess my my thought or about this is, you know, we know that it's moved around the state, and we're 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 discussing standoffs, and I I see the value of it, but if people are transporting it across the state, across international boundaries, you know, I, it seems like a five hundred or a thousand feet seems a little bit piddly, I mean, I was in high school in two thousand, so it's been a minute, but I don't recall having a particularly hard time of figuring out who I could purchase if I chose to do so, not that I did. Uh, but, so so I guess my my question is, do we have anything that shows a practical effect from a a thousand foot or a fifteen hundred foot, or or a ten-foot exclusion zone from from these places? I mean, I I see, I see the desire, the desire desires to protect and defend, um, vulnerable classes of people, but having an intention does not necessarily produce a result. So do we have anything that we can look to, any resources we could go to, where we could, cause I haven't found anything like that.
Well, that's the challenge of the issue, and back to the point I said earlier, where medical professionals have been trained, and it's because they haven't done research on the effects of this. There is no research out there, we're figuring it out as we go.
But I don't know if a thousand feet or five hundred feet's gonna make a difference on your point, I'm sorry to be blunt, but it's either five hundred, zero, or a thousand. It's not our intention of marijuana's not good for you, it is good for the ones that need it medically, and I'm thankful I don't have a grandson or a child that needs it, because my child did, I'd be the first one in line to get that to make my child happy. Thousand feet, five hundred feet, or zero feet.
And that's kinda what I was thinking too, is, I mean, what?
It's legal as here, let's figure it out.
What, why is the distance being set for those branders?
Recommend you try and go figure out who wrote the bill, put it on the state ballot, and why they came up with that language. But obviously somewhere along the line, somebody had concerns about proximity of that.
Now, I will say something you said earlier resonated with me, that they aren't, um, pharmacies. And everyone talks about treating them as pharmacies, but the fact that matters, you're never gonna, well, I won't say never. Not at this current state, you're not gonna have a pharmacist in there, and I I, your your point about conflicting medications actually, I hadn't considered that before tonight, and that's actually an interesting point.
I did some research on this last week, and looked at from the federal level, on what the federal approach is gonna be on this, and the DEA has stated that the times that they're gonna get involved with enforcement on this issue is when it impacts a minor. Okay, exposure and access to a minor, what are most of the places that we're putting this buffer around? Schools, daycares, public libraries, and churches. Most of the places you're gonna find minors at. That goes in line also with what the DEA is pushing out, right? So if you're using marijuana and it has a negative impact on a minor, the DEA, the DEA is gonna come out and enforce it on you. I talked to a judge in Sedalia the other day and asked for clarification, how do states come up with the right to supersede federal law and allowances? And he said, what it really comes down to is the states are saying they're just not gonna enforce that federal law. And it's up to the federal government to decide when they're gonna enforce that. Well, the DEA is the enforcement arm of the federal government, and what they're saying is, if it impacts negatively minors, they're gonna show up. And they're gonna take care of the problem. Again, my recommendation to the council is consistent with what, whoever the officials are, that came up with the language that put it on the ballot. And the voters of Missouri, including sixty percent of our community, approved was a thousand foot buffer from daycares, schools, public libraries, and churches. And I think that's consistent with the DEA is doing, now, can it transport through that section, yes. But do I, as a father, as I'm taking my kids to church, or to school, or to a daycare, do I have an ability to circumvent that and choose a different path that if I don't want them to see it, they don't have to, through these buffer zones, and yes, in that situation, five hundred feet makes a big difference. On what roads I can go through versus what I have to travel through in order to get to the location I wanna get to.
But by that same logic, wouldn't we need to put a buffer zone around, uh, Burger King? If you're trying to keep it away from children, there's a lot of children that go to Burger King for the play place.
You're not gonna have it in the same concentration that you're gonna have in a public school, I mean.
I I I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just looking for consistency, you know, if you know, if the the intent is to keep it away from children, that's a concern, and I agree, we need to keep it, do everything we can. But again, it's about efficacy.
We're talking about a federally illegal substance.
In that case, then we shouldn't have it in our community.
The discussion is, do we need to provide additional access, would somebody be willing to drive a quarter mile more to to do something that's gonna help with their quality of life?
And I, I, I have four children and ten grandkids, and I wanna educate my children, that is not a bad place. It's for people that need that medication, you're lucky you don't need it, but that is not a good place for you to go, because you don't need to smoke this, you don't need it. So educating the public and the kids and the older folks in town is huge on anything, same with drinking, you're not supposed to be twenty-one. Don't go in the bar till you're twenty-one.
Well, and the same, whenever alcohol, you know, after prohibition, whenever it came back around, that, I mean.
Education is, you gotta educate.
Had the stigma of it was a bad thing, and then later on, I, over time, it became something that, you know, has been become socially acceptable, so.
We got people selling Quaaludes and Xanax and everything on the streets of Warrensburg, I know that, so it is, you know, that's illegal, let's let's get rid of them.
So, ultimately, the the conversation's a distance, not a medical discussion. So it's it's, and the council is called to research, think, and as best as our ability, look at the future. Okay, and call, and so it's a distance discussion.
But, we all agree that it's illegal federally, and we all agree that we are subject to federal law. So, if we can agree on that, technically, from my perspective, would it would, would our lawful course of action, if we're here to uphold the constitution and the the rights of what we believe is correct, then we should say it is against the federal law, until the feds have reconciled it, it needs to be illegal. Because we are essentially facilitating a violation of the federal law. But our state does not have the authority to violate the federal regulations. Right, but.
The bottom line is, after your thousand foot question, is a thousand feet was the original number put out by the state? And then Mr. Franklin, I know will agree with this, that at no point in time was there a very clear explanation that a thousand foot meant, but we knew it was a thousand feet. And so that was what was provided from staff to to council, the new rules that we have that tell us what a thousand feet might look like, depending on if you're standing on one foot on a Saturday, the way it's written, but it, those came out May twenty-fourth, and they were effective June third. So they're.
I'll clarify that again, though, the the state language was, is it's a thousand foot buffer unless the local jurisdiction sets a different standard.
And that's, and that's, yeah, that's always the case, that we can go less than that, but that was, the only real guidance at the beginning was, we knew a thousand. We didn't really know much else about it.
So here's my question for you, if the federal, let's say the FBI or the feds come into Warrensburg, and they say, uh, you have ordinance authorizing people to sell marijuana in your community, and you have instructed your your law enforcement not to enforce, does that open the Warrensburg city up to any liability of prosecution or punishment from the federal government?
The city itself is highly unlikely to be punished by the federal government for anything, but our law enforcement officers would still be fully empowered to enforce any illegal possession, uh, and so.
But according to federal law, wouldn't all possession?
That would require a federal agent, uh, to come in and enforce that law, not a local one, they they may report it up to a federal agency if they so chose to do that, but it would require a federal agent to make a decision, a charging decision on that individual. At no point in time, i- if if chief is walking down the street and sees possession and tickets that individual right now as an illegal possession, that is not a federal charge, it's an ordinance charge, if it's under a certain amount. If it's over a certain amount, it may go to the state, and if it's over a certain amount from there, it may go up to the federal level, and so you're talking about a levels distinction issue.
So let's say a dispensary has five hundred pounds of marijuana derivatives.
That could be a federal issue, uh, but locally, we have, we will have instructed. That could be a federal issue, uh, but locally, we have, we will have instructed through the ordinance to our law enforcement that they are allowed to uh, do that business, and the state will have said the same thing to the state, uh, state law enforcement, that they are allowed to do that. And so, it would be up to a federal agent to come in and make that decision.
And that goes back to the point I made earlier with the DEA being the enforcement side where they publicly stated, the only time they're gonna come in and enforce that, there's a list of categories, but the main ones are access and negative effects upon minors and those types of things. They're, they're not gonna, if, if you have marijuana for a medical purpose, the DEA is likely not gonna come down and get you on that unless you're providing your medical marijuana to someone that isn't supposed to have it, and particularly if it's a minor. Then the DEA is gonna come at you, and they've stated that publicly.
Does the, does the states, does the state have it in their stuff that says that you can only, you can only consume it in your home? Is that in that order?
You can't, you can neither, you can't get the prescription at the same location, you cannot use it at the same location. Now, for a use out in the open air standpoint, that's where it will be a little bit tricky, because some of these products will be balmed and vaporized, and it's not, you know, this is not nineteen seventy-five's marijuana, uh, you know, it's a little bit different, so it's not gonna be somebody walking down the street smoking a joint. So, we may not always know, when they're, and right now, I'm sure, we don't know, everybody is using marijuana on a daily basis. Um, but as far as that is concerned, if somebody is openly using it, that would be probable cause for a police officer to initiate a stop at that point. Reasonable suspicion to perform any type of search, ask them, can, can, you know, if you have a permit for this or a license for this or, you know, prescription. Kind of like car insurance.
Correct, right.
So, one of the attorneys told me though, cause my lease at Home Rentals and Management says, no smoking in your apartment. But now that if they have a medical marijuana, I cannot make them go outside, they can smoke it wherever they like.
I won't pretend to know what that attorney said, who I don't know their name, but what I will say is that it is a, a medical use at that point.
I would wanna, I did wanna say again, as we had this conversation, first time we developed all this, again, the, the concern of staff, and I know Jerry won't agree with this. There, our first name basis, you're right, Jerry. Is that we took it from the approach that medical marijuana is a precursor to recreational marijuana. Does this happen throughout the country? Okay, we can see the pattern over and over and over again, and so we took the approach of, we're gonna zone now for recreational marijuana. So, that way, when it transitions from medical marijuana to recreational marijuana, we don't grandfather locations into places that we don't want them. So, we developed our ordinance basically for recreational marijuana, and we're applying it early to medical marijuana. So, later on down the road, when recreational marijuana is in Missouri, that they're not gonna be right next to our schools and our daycares and those types of things. And if you don't believe it's coming, the sources I have tell me that the lobbyists are telling the state officials, you have one year to get your act together on medical marijuana, and they're gonna come push for legislation on recreational marijuana. Now, whether or not the voters approve that is a different story, but that, that is gonna be a, a discussion across the state. And in those situations, when recreational becomes recreational, uh, next time you pass through Colorado, take some time, spend some time in their downtowns. You, you see it, you smell it everywhere, and it's having negative impacts. I was a city manager in Oklahoma, Nebraska, when Colorado passed that. And we dealt with the impacts all the way to Nebraska when that happened, so, uh, and not all of those are positive.
I agree with you when the alcohol wasn't in prohibition and now we have it, it, it'll get old.
It's a complicated issue. Some people are, are on the fence, one, you know, both sides of the spectrum, uh, where are you, Tarrell? What's your uh opinion to share with us?
Oh, I'm, I'm neutral on it. I just wanna make sure that the council is looking at all points of view when we're thinking about it and just, you know, the buffer zones and what it's actually being used for, and versus, I mean, like I said, people can go out and get illegal drugs, but I just wanna make sure that we're also making sure that we're having enough, not enough. We're having the opportunity for people that wanna legally purchase it, be able to do so, and not losing out on that revenue that could potentially be coming from those facilities to a place like Knott's, Noster, Sedalia, Clinton, different places like that, just because of preconceived stigmas of what the actual product is.
I mean, I, I wanna thank everybody who's come for it or against it, who's come, because this is like last month when we had a bunch of people upset about putting a subdivision someplace. You know, well, we couldn't do anything about that because this is what our ordinance said, and you guys are helping us make sure this ordinance is right for everybody in Warrensburg, and I wanna thank everybody who showed it for it, against it, but I wanna thank everybody who showed up.
Hello, I think you all know me too. This is going on so long, I'm starting to feel lightheaded and dizzy. I didn't come here intending to say anything, but actually while I was listening, a lot of you know, I used to work for the university and was involved in a lot of prevention initiatives there, and I'm a scientist at heart. And it seems like these uh buffer zones been around for a long time, right, Barb? They, they're for bars as well and places to sell liquor. Okay, what, what I found myself being really curious about, and this is a genuine question, cause I don't know the answer. These buffer zones are created with the intention of uh avoiding certain set of bad outcomes. I'm wondering if there's empirical data demonstrating that they're effective at uh avoiding the bad outcomes they're intended to prevent. Uh, sometimes social policy is guided by science, sometimes it isn't, and that's just a genuine question, cause that would help, wouldn't it, to know that?
Any others, Doug?
Uh, Doug Conley, employed at the Warrensburg School District, is also coach for the district, but um have a lot of experience dealing with social emotional behaviors. Kids, a lot of it's substance abuse related, daily, uh, this last year was probably record year for us in incidents at the middle school, which I know is totally unrelated to dispensaries, it's totally separate issue, but again, my concern, and also business owner of the Learning Garden, is just the geographic location that we've been approached on, uh, those same things, uh, Mr. Stewart that you've highlighted, and the reasons why that buffer is put into place, the location we've been approached on would encompass probably two churches. Our preschool, possibly the Christian school, Sterling Elementary, and I guess middle school wasn't mentioned, so maybe that's outside of that. But again, a lot of those students in that area are outside of that bus transportation uh location, so they're walkers or car rider, or walkers or bike riders to school, uh, the constant traffic going through there again. And it's more of just a desensitized issue, that, that's my concern is just, you know, again, not opposed at all to uh the dispensary coming into Warrensburg. I, I'm saying, if I had a family member that could benefit from it, I would be all for it, and my belief is, if, you know, you build it in a spot where, you know, they need it, they're gonna get there and they'll get access to it. Um, but I just feel the location, that's my big concern, is where it's been approached. You, you're, all the things that have been put into place to protect those entities, you're affecting a great number. It sound like just one preschool is being affected, you're talking two churches, a school, preschool, Christian school. So, that, that's my only concern is, is the location, until it does get to a point that, yes, people need to be educated, yes, there's a lot uh, there to go on, but unfortunately, a lot of times that doesn't happen, and, and uh, but yeah, my concern is just a desensitizing of it, if it is. There's gonna be advertisements for it, whether it's big or small or to code, but there's constant traffic. Poor Dairy Queen hates some of our middle school kids that go there every Wednesday on those early outs, there's flocks of them that go up and down that street, uh, go to Dairy Queen. And uh, I can hear the conversations already, you know, of, you know, here at schools, we're trying to educate and all that, and promote not using. And, and uh, you know, kids will see that leaf or whatever, and they will, you know, you can educate them that that's for people that need it, but, you know, they, they'll take it to where they want, but, you know, my, again, that's just my concern is, you know, if that buffer is released, the location that we've been approached on currently for where they're looking to want to do that encompasses a whole lot of those same things that that buffer was put into place to protect, so, thank you.
Casey, can I ask Barbara a question, please? Um, what's the, can you have a bar or a, not such a bar, but like a, a place to sell beer? Is there a circumference with daycare and churches and all that, or can they just pop up?
Well, there's a setback from churches, I know, I don't know if there's a ceiling or not.
The liquor stores that they sell liquor, not, not marijuana, we're talking liquor store, if I wanted to open one up two blocks away.
There is a setback, the state has a setback.
Schools and churches.
And so, it's in the licensing ordinance, which is why I'm not real familiar with it.
I was just curious, so what's it?
One hundred foot.
It's a hundred foot setback from schools and churches for a liquor license. Although there is language in there, as I've let the council know as well, that that buffer can be reduced if they have written consent from that entity that not hundred foot buffer is measured for.
Any others that wanna share briefly?
If anyone else is spoken, I have another point.
Sure.
I can clarify a couple of forms, thank you.
Casey. Uh, the daycare that I made reference, one of the daycares I made reference to in, in my letter and, and presentation was I did directly speak with Mrs. Conley, and she directly told me she had no objection. Certainly, I respect if she's changed her mind, but I didn't want you to think that I tried to mislead you or misrepresent you.
And, and, and having your personal opinion is one thing, but whenever, you know, your, your opinion is going to affect your business in many, you know, eighty, eighty families. I, I mean, I'm sure she's speaking.
Well, and I said that, and, and I said that in my presentation. No, no, I said that in my presentation, that she said to me, she did not have an objection. First, in the distance, and I did mention specifically a location, she had no objection. She did not know what her customer, customers would say. I respect that. I just wanted to be clear on that.
And you're a very persuasive guy too, Jerry. That's a compliment.
My wife agreed to marry me, yeah. The other, the other point I wanted to make, and, and yes, Harold, we're Harold and Jerry before, during, and after the meeting, in mutual respect. But legislating this as we would recreational marijuana is part of the problem, in my view. It's not the same, it's not the same, and the fact that we've chosen to do it is, again, a problem in my view. Other municipalities haven't looked at it that way. Uh, my legal counsel on this subject, Adam, has said, it can and should be legislated differently, just like if you wanted to sell a six pack of beer, you have a level of license. If you wanted to sell spirits, you have another level of license. If you wanted to sell liquor by the drink, you have yet another level of license. And they're recommending, certain legal circles are recommending, treat marijuana the same. Medical marijuana should not be in the same box, if you will, as recreational marijuana.
I'm pretty sure, though, if you go to Colorado, all those dispensaries have converted to recreational marijuana dispensaries.
Understood.
There is no medical marijuana dispensaries anymore.
They're much more liberal than the state of Missouri is, much more. Or, hey, give, give examples for San Francisco, California, but that's not Warrensburg, Missouri.
We know you're not with the Colorado.
Mr. Mayor, I would raise one final point, maybe it's a final point. Um, applications that are going forward to the state are due by August third, and an element of that application is a letter from the city stating that they are or can meet the city's requirements. In order for me to write such a letter, I'm not even know what our requirements are. So, if we are entertaining lowering the one thousand foot, it would be good for me to get an indication of that tonight. So, that can be drafted in the ordinance that's brought to you in July and considered by planning commission next week. Otherwise, we're probably looking at special meetings so that we can help people get their applications in by August third.
You made a good point about planning and zoning, cause they're the ones that bring it to us. Now, you're asking us before planning and zoning to do a point.
Give me an indication, and then I will put that in front of them on Monday night.
Yeah, this is a public meeting requirement, so before it comes back to you guys.
We, we've received lots of uh opinions and comments for and against, um, and my opinion, and we'll all hopefully share our personal opinion, is, you know, we've mired the state um, in providing protection from those that feel it is necessary to have that. And um, I, I think what we have is just, there's plenty of areas inside the city that this can go. Even properties that are owned by Mr. Franklin. I, I don't, I don't foresee a business not coming because the red area is slightly smaller on one side, and there's only however many dozens of properties that are options versus, you know, three times that or twice that on the other side, I think there's gonna be plenty of space available. Um, but I think for those that want that protection, I think it's our role as a city council to provide that to them. So, that's my opinion is, I think we are good where we are mirroring the state, as well as Blue Springs and Columbia, and Independence, and Jefferson City, and many others across the state.
And I, I feel the same way, I feel very comfortable with a thousand feet around those areas. The other piece of the ordinance I would be willing to look at, but I feel very comfortable with a thousand foot.
So, let me ask, when you said earlier, you was talking about the thousand feet straight line and then the thousand feet the other way, will that change some things?
This will make the thousand feet a little bit smaller, in most cases.
So, there'll be more, more places possible for, but not that many, a few, right?
Yeah, it'll be a little bit better than it was.
It'll decrease the thousand feet as the, as the crow flies, cause you're taking the thousand feet as a pedestrian walks.
If I had to vote, sorry, if I had to vote right now, I'm on the fence.
And I'll tell you, that, that particular part of the language is not, that's not just recommendation from us in general, that's what the state handed down.
I'm comfortable with the thousand foot, I've had a, a significant number of um parents and stuff talk to me, and I think that the uh buffer is safe. I think that's where I wanna go.
Honestly, I think it should be treated like alcohol. I think it should have the same standoff as alcohol.
So, as we sit now, uh, three are, are comfortable with where it's at, I don't think, do we need to vote or anything?
We can.
I think we're okay.
Is that enough direction?
Yeah, that's enough direction.
I mean, I'm not voting for anything right now, yes or no.
I mean, with three not willing to change it, I'd, I'd take that as a directive from council that they're not directing staff to bring back an ordinance that changes the buffer, so.
I will be anxious to see planning and zoning.
So, we wouldn't go to planning and zoning unless you direct us to take it to planning and zoning.
The ordinance will go, with, the ordinance we're drafting will completely repeal the January ordinance and replace it. So, all that language will be in front of you again, uh, we're doing that for the ease of, of giving it to people who want to know what the rules are, so that they're not trying to take two ordinances and, okay, I, I delete this section and read this section, and try to put it together for themselves, so Doug and I are drafting it as a repeal and replace ordinance. Um, so that, those buffers are in there, but we will not amend any, or put any changes in the red line version to you.
But then, well, what Harold said, you've got a body of nine or how, how, how many we got on planning and zoning, they could recommend to bring the council to lower that thousand, correct? Or they don't now the council's three to two?
They could, I, I don't anticipate.
I'm not gonna say they are, but I'm saying they have a voice in this, just so much.
But they read the paper.
Cause the public's gonna come and probably try and talk them out of the thousand.
They can choose to do that, but staff have not been directed by council to prepare that change in the ordinance and take it to them and ask for their opinion. So, we're gonna take to them how we measure it, and adding the fifth use as the state is mandated. They choose to discuss the buffer zone and wanna give a recommendation to council to lower that they can, but staff isn't going to facilitate that conversation.
And any one of those three could change between now and the yes or no vote.
We, are you able to provide the documentation or the layers to Mr. Franklin's clients so that they can proceed with the, with their applications, or do you need to wait until we take action at the first meeting in July before we can get them the documentation, cause they have the August third deadline coming?
Nobody's requested a letter from me at this point. Uh, so, there's nobody waiting on a, a decision that I am aware of. We've talked about sites, but nobody's requested such a letter. So, if I wrote a letter tomorrow, I would rate, write it based on the rules tomorrow. Uh, letting them know, you, you know, this could change in two weeks. Ask me again on the ninth.
Right, okay. Yeah, but, but you could get them started, should they wanna get it in early, that kinda thing, so.
I don't think there's, pre-applications have already been submitted. I, I don't know what sites may have already been submitted for Warrensburg. They've not made that list public that I'm aware of.
Quick, quick question, I apologize, I know it's getting super late. Whose job is it to establish the distance now that we're no longer using the, the, as the crow flies? Do we have a?
Do we have a person in the city that their job will be to walk?
Probably Barbara.
Probably Barbara.
As part of the zoning.
So I'm sorry.
The city planner, Kristen Dyer, does it on the GIS system, and then I review it before we provide an answer to an applicant.
Okay.
Or whether they're an applicant, I mean, it, sometimes they're random emails, okay.
Cause I know the new system is, GIS not necessarily, may not be friendly to it, right, just yet.
Right, so there are layers and information we have that we don't publish to the website.
Okay, alright.
So we can get them an answer pretty quickly, usually within a day. Uh, and right now, when they're asking, we're giving them the answer of straight line and the state's rules, so they can make the decision for themselves what they wanna pursue.
And so when I said on the fence, it'd be nice if you could maybe provide possibly for us, but me, when you say a thousand feet, where it was in January when we said, and now what the state's mandating?
So that, that's what the example that's in your packet.
Okay.
That aerial photo, now, nobody has asked, I don't want very last time calling me tomorrow. Nobody has asked very last specific examples, but when we ran the example, I wanted you to see with what you could picture, most of us can picture that building and the Lutheran church, so it was easy to read the map quickly. So when you measure from the current rule, the front door to the front door, nine hundred and ten feet.
Right.
When you measure the state's way, you go from the front door, across the street, down south to the property line, for a total of a thousand two hundred twenty feet.
So have you seen doing some of that, what ones it opened up to the way the state's now mandating the thousand feet versus the straight line?
For.
I mean, I understood that part of it.
For the ones that we have run, it did not, they, the, they were not that close to missing it to begin with. It was more a six hundred or four hundred number, and so the state measurement did not at a thousand make a difference.
So our first one over there on the right's what it is, right?
I, I cannot map what the state's rules are, because there's too many infinite varieties. Because in one scenario, I might measure for a property line, and in another, I might measure to the wall of the structure.
So you're just gonna wait for an applicant, and then if that applicant says, I want it here, then you'll go and measure and say yes or no.
Yeah, they call me and say, run one twenty-three East Young.
Okay.
And we run one twenty-three East Young and tell them, this is, this is what hit, yes or no.
Okay.
And if it's a no, it's because you're four hundred and thirty-five feet from this, or two hundred and ten feet from that.
Thank you, Barb.
All right, moving on to appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Can we have you down, Jerry, it was for the American, medical marijuana, correct?
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, and then, uh, Heather, it was for the medical marijuana, which you've already spoke to, and Rebecca Schumate, same thing. Uh, and then Tarrell, uh, that was your intent to speak on the medical marijuana, and then no on the, uh, any additional appearances to the council. Uh, mayor all appointments, uh, we have one, you should have received the, uh, application. Uh, but I want to appoint Chris O'Moller to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Somebody would be willing to pass that on.
I move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Land?
Yes, thank you. Uh, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council, anybody have anything else, uh, for the good of the cause? Questions on that's concerned? All right, city manager report.
Uh, I think he's been here a long enough, I don't think I'm gonna add a whole lot to it, uh, so we'll give an update on the, uh, roundabout project for you when you get to him.
Yep.
Um, but I don't have anything further.
Okay, Matthew?
You have some good news, Matthew.
We, we are not that far off of, uh, projecting revenue this year, and I, I do believe by the end of the year, uh, we'll, we will come out, uh, either right at or maybe just shy of what we projected, so not as much of a concern right now as it was if you're concerned.
We have advertised our GIS coordinator position, if you know of anybody with those skills, I'd like to work for the city, send them my way.
Uh, roundabout project, the Myers, uh, had the asphalt contractors begin today, putting first layer of road base down on the east side. Uh, they also did second, North Place Twenty-One Road of, of Old Holden Street, first layer, uh, layer asphalt in that, uh, got, the asphalt company, uh, supplier is producing surface mix tomorrow, so therefore, uh, for projects today, so the contractor can't get base mix with, for the second layer, uh, won't come and place it till it's finished. Uh, the schedule that I presented council has seen, and there will be off by one day, but they plan, once the asphalt is, uh, in place, getting K and G striping and, and getting that stripped roadway for the north-south traffic, uh, changeover straight, uh, then they'll have to move the barriers, and that traffic should be switched over to, uh, on the east side of the roadway, while construction takes place on the, uh, west side. So, uh, once again, there, we've had a few weather delays, uh, but we are trying to get that one piece of North Place Twenty-One opened up, uh, where we can get some relief for those folks up on the north end.
So what is the, what's the projection to get Hawthorne opened back up again?
It, Hawthorne itself will not be till on the fourth phase of the project to be opened up. There's no way that you can have traffic accessing on the Hawthorne without north, southbound traffic moving in there, uh, those center, the linear items are being built, and the, uh, portion of the, the roundabout center is being built during the periods of time, so that's, uh, that opening of Hawthorne itself will be the fourth phase, uh, when they, they pull out and start work on the center roundabout portion, so.
I thought we were gonna be able to make a turn in the Hawthorne, that I'm misreading the math.
There's no way they can control that traffic and have it at, uh, intersection operational until they get that, uh, totally in place.
So, I know when I emailed, I, I did say that would be open, but I misunderstood what staff told me, so I misunderstood that would not be.
If you go back to the handouts, so I had it out to everybody that, that is feeding on there on that, that hand.
Okay. And you know the, the graphics of the four phases from the meeting, uh, that we had, where we had it up on the wall? Is there a way to get that on, on to social, so, social media or on the website, you know, is, is it out there?
We have it on our, okay, on, on other website.
When we start this, the next phase, we can republish a lot again, do a social media to remind anybody again what the phases are.
I went to lunch with Zaxby the other day, I found you.
A lot of pay more.
I'm sorry.
Gary, anything?
Um, I just, just apologize for the appearance of the visitor center currently, as you walk by, we are in the process of moving, we will be open to the public, our new location, uh, next month. So we're really excited, if you could come by, we'll schedule a ribbon cutting a little bit later in the month of July, we wanna make sure we get everything, um, situated and, and going real smooth before we, we do that, but we will do that, we will have a ribbon cutting and open house.
Mm-hmm. Jill? Tracy, anything from J C D C? Yeah, nothing? Door? Door? Chief?
Nothing.
Adam? Anybody? All right, we appreciate everybody's patience, as well as your participation in an extremely long meeting, and, uh, let's call this night adjourned.
Hey, Chief?
Yeah.
I apologize, couldn't get on the spot like that, I wasn't, I wasn't fine too.
I put on the top very many years all the time.